And blessed be His kingdom now and forever. Amen.
Almighty God, to you all hearts are open, all desires known, and from you no secrets are hid. Cleanse the thoughts of our hearts by the inspiration of your Holy Spirit, that we may perfectly love you and worthily magnify your holy name through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, in Christ you have revealed your glory among the nations. Preserve the works of your mercy, that your church throughout the world may persevere with steadfast faith and the confession of your name through Jesus Christ our Lord who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit. One God forever and ever.
Amen.
A reading from Paul's first letter to the Thessalonians. "Paul, Savanus, and Timothy, to the church of the Thessalonians in God the Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. Grace to you in peace. We always give thanks to God for all of you and mention you in our prayers, constantly remembering before our God and Father your work of faith and labor of love and steadfastness of hope in our Lord Jesus Christ. For we know, brothers and sisters beloved by God, that he has chosen you, because our message of the gospel came to you not in word only, but also in power and in the Holy Spirit and with full conviction, just as you know what kind of persons we prove to be among you for your sake. And you became imitators of us and of the Lord; for in spite of persecution you received the word with joy inspired by the Holy Spirit, so that you became an example to all the believers in Macedonia and in Achaia. For the word of the Lord has sounded forth from you, not only in Macedonia and Achaia, but in every place your faith in God has become known, so that we have no need to speak about it. For the people of those regions report about us what kind of welcome we had among you, and how you turned to God from idols to serve a living and true God, and to wait for his Son from heaven whom he raised from the dead, Jesus, who rescues us from the wrath that is coming." The word of the Lord.
Thank you, God.
The Holy Gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ according to Matthew. The Pharisees went and plotted to entrap Jesus in what he said. So they sent their disciples to him, along with the Herodians, saying, "Teacher, we know that you are sincere and teach the way of God in accordance with truth and show deference to no one; for you do not regard people with partiality. Tell us, then, what you think: is it lawful to pay taxes to the emperor, or not?" But Jesus, aware of their malice, said, "Why are you putting me to the test, you hypocrites? Show me the coin used for the tax." And they brought him a denarius. Then he said to them, "Whose head is this, and whose title?" They answered, "The emperor's." Then he said to them, "Give therefore to the emperor the things that are the emperor's, and to God the things that are God's." When they heard this, they were amazed, and they left him and went away. The Gospel of the Lord.
Give to God the things that are God's, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Today is our stewardship Sunday, and we've redesigned our service a little bit to shorten the worship part, and then we're unfolding a town meeting into our worship today. I promise you, you'll be out by 11:30. But we thought this would be a different approach, given that we're in a different space. Now, the first thing I want to say is that in the past, when I was growing up, when the annual rector giving the stewardship sermon came on, I could always feel people kind of squirming and saying, "Oh yeah, it's stewardship time again. Yeah, got it. We gotta kind of endure this." And so I pray that that's not how it's gonna feel today at all. But let me say what I think are, for me, just some foundational things about God and giving and generosity. And the first thing I want to say is, it feels good to give. And yeah, exactly, we know this. We all know that. I mean, people, they do studies on this about giving is good and it feels good. But what I don't ever see spoken about is, why does it feel good? And for me, the answer is that when we give, we are reflecting, and even more than reflecting, we're sharing in the very nature of God. God is a giver. I mean, the story of creation begins with God saying, "I don't like being alone. I want to create. I want to give life." And suddenly there is light, and stars, and planets, and creatures, and birds, and water, and finally, human beings, created in God's image, who can share in and show forth God's love in the world. God is an abundant generous giver. Generosity and giving is at the very essence and nature of God himself. And so when we give, the reason it feels good is we're opening our hearts and our lives up to reflecting, sharing in, and showing forth God's very nature. Giving opens up a well in our souls in which the living water of God is poured in and flows forth like a never-ending spring. That's why it feels good to give. So that's why I want to say, it's good to give. The second thing I want to say is, when you and we give to St. Gregory's, and you do, I want to say this, I want you all to hear this really loud. I am so grateful for the giving of this congregation. I am so grateful for the giving of this congregation. I'm gonna say it again. Because I am so grateful for the giving of this congregation. When I look back over the last four or five years, we, like everybody else, endured a pandemic. And not only did St. Gregory's keep going, we decided we'd make it hard for ourselves that we'd run a capital campaign during the pandemic. And we'd ask everyone to give to that during the pandemic. And not only did you give, we raised over $7.5 million for the capital campaign in addition to our annual giving. We went through not one, but two phases of construction and renovation. The second phase, which were less than two months away from being completed. And that all happened because we all together, you, gave. You gave fully, you gave generously, you gave abundantly. I am grateful for the giving of this congregation. It's been astonishing, and it's been life-giving. So that's the third thing I want to say today, is the life-giving nature of St. Gregory's. This past week, there was an article in the Sun Sentinel, I don't know if anyone saw it, celebrating our 70th anniversary. They actually did a story on us. You know, we'll send the link to everyone on the What's Happening so you all can see it, because it's really a very nice article. And yesterday, I get an email from a member, a former member of St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church, who I knew when I first came to St. Gregory's many years ago, and she was part of helping us get family promise started. And she took the time, she hasn't lived in Boca for 10 years, but she follows Boca. She took the time to send me an email saying, "I saw the article in the Sun Sentinel." And she said, "I'm just amazed by what St. Gregory's has done over these last couple of decades. You are an amazing church, and you know, I'm just really impressed, and I wanted you to know this." And wow, to get it out of the blue, to get an email, someone outside our community looking in and saying, "St. Gregory's is making a profound difference in the Boca Raton community and beyond." And we are. Every week, we celebrate in our bulletin, and I hope you love it as much as we love putting it together, the story of St. Gregory's making a difference. And in our staff, every week, we sort of say, "Okay, what story do we tell this week?" And the trouble we have is, we have to decide which story to tell and which to tell first, because we have so many stories of people and ministries making a difference in, you know, in our community. We are making a profound difference. And when I think about the fact that there are, this week, 380 children in Haiti going to school with fresh drinking water because of our partnership with the South Florida Haiti Project. When I think about the fact that today, this afternoon, there'll be another 30, 40, 50 people who are hungry, who are gonna come to St. Gregory's to be fed, because they know they're welcomed. We in the Episcopal Church and we at St. Gregory's are practicing a profound and radical welcome of Jesus. Our way of following Jesus is a way that says, "Every human being has worth and dignity, and you belong, and you are loved by God, and you are loved by St. Gregory's, and you are here to be loved, and to love, and to serve." It's a profound life. We have 15 or so people in the newcomers' class. Some of them are here right now. I could make you raise your hands. They've never worshipped inside our church, but they're coming and being part of our life because there's a profound life-giving goodness in this congregation. We are making a difference. Our ministries of teaching our children, you know, as we look, there's a teacher out there working with 4th and 5th graders, literally working with our teachers. I came from a confirmation class with 10 teens just before this. Father Ben is online. My God, he's got a worldwide following at this point with his teaching. We are making a difference here at St. Gregory's, and it's profound. Our prayer shawl ministry, how many people have given thanks for the prayer shawl ministry this past week? Yes, thank you, Father Craig, who's welcome back to you and Addie. Yes, exactly. You know, our prayer shawl ministry, we, women create shawls and pray over them. This week, we sent one of these prayer shawls to a 15-year-old who's going through a serious health challenge. I got a picture yesterday, which I'm gonna share with the congregation once the parents give me the approval. The boy's got the prayer shawl over his head, and he's just wrapping it, and he said, "I want to say thanks to those who made this." A 15-year-old. We are making a difference, a profound difference. And it's your giving, our giving corporately, that is making God's mission of transforming hearts and communities through Jesus' love happen. Now let me say the fourth thing, that at some point, the rubber of giving meets the road of our church budget. And I am so grateful for the leadership of our vestry. They take their calling and their leadership, their servant leadership, really seriously, and they work at it. It's not easy to make this budget work. You know, every year, this, you know, coming year, they're raising our property insurance by, you know, 18% or something like that. Oh my God, where are we gonna get the money for that? You know, we try to figure out how we do right by our staff. Well, we'd love to have dental insurance for our staff. We don't. We can't afford it. You know, we have a giving to the diocese, and that keeps going up. And you know, and the vestry takes this so seriously and prayerfully and faithfully. And you know what? God is good, and it happens. But it happens because we all give. Because we believe that God is really working through our corporate life and witness and mission, and we are making a difference, a life-giving, profound difference, in our community and beyond. Now, I promise you that you're gonna get out by 11:30, so yeah, that's about all I got today for you, with one addition. I got more, but you know, I'm holding back. Yeah, you know, Father, he's always got more. We sent everyone in the church, so hopefully you got it, our stewardship brochure. Now, if you didn't get it, we've got some extra copies over there, so everyone can get one. And I hope that you all feel as excited and proud as I am when you go through this. It's beautifully done, and in pictures, and in words, and in quotations, and in graphs. You know, we tell the story of what God is doing here at St. Gregory's. So, thank you for all you give. Thank you for all you give. Thank you for all you give. And as we once again, together, face stewardship, you know, do that, say your prayers like I know you do, and like I do, and say, "Okay, what is God calling me to do to be part of furthering and multiplying the impact and difference that St. Gregory's is making? Thank you for all you're doing, and thank God for all God's doing. Amen.
We stand. We believe in one God, the Father of the Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth, of all that is seen and unseen. We believe in one Lord, Jesus Christ, the only Son of God, eternally begotten of the Father, God from God, light from light, true God from true God, begotten not made, of one being with the Father. Through him all things were made, for us and for our salvation. He came down from heaven. By the power of the Holy Spirit, he became incarnate from the Virgin Mary and was made man. For our sake he was crucified under Pontius Pilate. He suffered death and was buried. On the third day he rose again in accordance with the Scriptures. He ascended into heaven and is seated at the right hand of the Father. He will come again in glory to judge the living and the dead, and his kingdom will have no end. We believe in the Holy Spirit, the Lord, the giver of life, who proceeds from the Father and the Son. With the Father and the Son he is worshiped and glorified. He has spoken through the prophets. We believe in one holy Catholic and apostolic church. We acknowledge one baptism for the forgiveness of sins. We look for the resurrection of the dead and the life of the world to come. Amen. The peace of the Lord be always with you.
And also with you.
All and welcome. Great to see everybody out today. Yay. So just a welcome to everyone, a welcome to our online worshippers as well. So delighted that, whether online or in person, that you're here and worshiping today. Welcome back, as I worked into the sermon there with Father Craig and Addie Burlington. There you are. Looks like we're recruiting them to bring up something. Yeah, Father, and your dog as well. Yes, exactly. Thank you, Father Craig. And I want to say, welcome to Shar and Steve Vinnick, and God, what a great surprise. Yay. Welcome back to Shar and Steve. So yeah, it's old home week. Everyone's coming in. It's great. So we're gonna keep the announcements very short because of our time constraint today. But I just want to note that today, during the town hall meeting, the children are gonna have a harvest festival celebration upstairs, so that after communion, at the post-communion prayer, the children will head upstairs, or back upstairs, because some of them are up there now, back upstairs for the festival. And then parents, at the end of the town hall meeting, you go upstairs to get your children. So that's for our children today. New members' class, we are gonna have a short class today after the town hall meeting. We'll meet out in the annex, so for those who are part of the group, you can come in. We'll meet out in the annex, so for those who are part of the New Members Class, come out afterwards and join me. Just a note that we have only a handful, and I literally mean less than 10, tickets left for the gala, and then we have a sellout. And today's, yeah, isn't that great? Yeah. Yeah. And so if you're gonna get tickets, Carol or Arlie, or both, yeah, there you are. I'm looking, yeah, there you are. They're gonna be there, and we are down to the handful, so did I, I got that right? Yeah, thank you. Okay, Arlie, yeah, great. Next week, we're gonna have a special presentation during Coffee Hour about Alzheimer's and dementia and care, and we all have friends, neighbors, family sometimes that have this. So very informative program next week, put on by Stephen Ministry. Looking forward to that. I think it should be really interesting. So let me invite now Bill Lince, our Senior Warden. As traditional, we have the Senior Warden come up and inspire us on this stewardship Sunday. Bill.
Good morning, St. Gregory's.
Good morning.
It is an honor, privilege, and sense of profound responsibility to serve this church and our many ministries. I want to thank all of you for your faith, generosity, support, and devotion in all you've done for this church. We all have accomplished a great deal over the last few years. Today, as you know, is stewardship Sunday, a word that you don't hear often, except at church. But what does it really mean? Stewardship is deeply rooted in our faith and is essential to the continued growth and flourishing of our church family. It is more than financial giving. It's about cherishing the talents, time, and resources that we have been blessed with and using them to further His kingdom. Our talents, whether they be in leadership, teaching, law, medicine, business, or any other area, are meant to not be hidden away, but rather shared in abundance. Then there is financial stewardship. Our contributions, whether big or small, play a vital role in the sustenance and growth of this church. They allow us to support our many ministries, reach out to those in need, and maintain the sacred space where we gather to worship and grow together. Rooted in abundance is our stewardship theme this year, illustrated and explained by the brochure that Father Andrew showed you. If you did not receive one, we have one for you today. But what does it mean, rooted in abundance? There's so many examples, but I'll give you a few. It's the Loss and Healing Support Ministry done by the Reverend David Potter. It's our 15 trained Stephen ministers working with their care receivers for compassionate, Christ-centered listening and care and total confidence. It's the Doyle Patton Gentle Giant Foundation providing compassionate mental health services for children and families experiencing financial hardship. It's Father Bruno's laying on the hands in healing ministry. It's Pat Jordan and Maggie Brockman taking these altar flowers every Sunday to people in the hospital and alone at home. It's the 12 incredible women that make up the Knitters Group that's headed up by Susama and provide prayer shawls for Father Andrew and Father Ben to bless and deliver. They just blessed 20 of these. This didn't work very well at 8 o'clock. I'll try it again. This one, this one, it was just completed by my wife, Mary. Where are you there? It's beautiful. This one is crocheted rather than knitted. Mary will tell you about that later, not me. But if you've received one while in the hospital rehab center, you know the love, warmth, and kindness bundled and blessed in each and every one of these. Every one is rooted in abundance. A small seed planet can also turn into a very large tree. Years ago, the late Jim Turner, a retired IBM exec and a member of our church, had an idea, which he shared with Father Andrew. He said, "There's this rural community located several miles west of Port-au-Prince that needs a lot of help called Bondo." What started first by sending a box of vitamins was our first gesture from our church to Haiti. There now, as you mentioned, are 380 students, all in uniform, marching to church in the morning in a lovely video that you can watch. 54,000 student lunches being provided, 19 teachers and administrators, 10,000 gallons of potable water now flowing into the community, 12 new bathrooms with running water for the first time, and 12 high school graduates. Anita Thorstad also wrote a book called Kai Timon. Many probably don't know about her incredible ministry. She spent years in Haiti with our children there. We truly are rooted in abundance at St. Gregory's. The next three Sundays, you will hear more incredible testimonials from our parishioners about rooted in abundance. But one of my big responsibilities as Senior Warden is the financial soundness and operating budget of this church. Most of you know we have a very large campus. We have our sanctuary, Harris Hall, the rectory, the Canterbury House, the Facilities Manager House, the Associated Priest House, and vacant property that we own. Our overall approved budget for 2023 is 1.4 million, of which 1 million comes from our pledges. For 2023 physical year, we are projecting a shortfall of approximately $38,000. Gary Paris will address this in the town hall meeting in a few minutes, but we still have a chance to close the gap with a successful 70th gala coming up, improved parking revenue in the evening especially, and generous plate revenue from now until the end of the year, especially when we get back into our church. If everyone that, first of all, let me say that we have, we have, we're looking for ways to lower the impact, but the net of all this is expenses are going to be approximately 20% up year over year. The dioceses would like us to provide dental care. We would too, and it's not ruled out yet, but we're gonna look at it. Our online broadcast services cost about $30,000 a year to send our services from St. Gregory's around the world. We are looking at a lot of ways to lower the impact, and although we are working on the 2024 budget, we think pledges will need to be 1.2 million next year to cover the increases. Now, we have over 1,100 people that attend this church at one time or another, some during the winter months, some every Sunday, and many attend just twice a year. We have over 175 families that pledge. Many of you contribute to the plate each Sunday. Thank you very much. Several of you tithe a portion of your income. Some of you pay in advance, and thank you very much. Some of you also use push pay. Many of you increase your pledge from year to year, and we really appreciate that. There are numerous ways to give financially to the church. They're all listed in the brochure that you've received. If everyone that attends this church would support the church based on their capacity, we would be in very good shape. If you are not contributing, we pray that you would consider to contribute. If you are not sharing your abundance with the church, we pray that you would start. Generosity has a way of spreading. Your abundance can grow our roots deeper and stronger. Together, we can continue to strengthen our church, community, and our ministries. We look forward to walking the journey of stewardship with each and every one of you. God bless you all, and thank you very much.
Let us walk in love as Christ loved us and gave Himself for us, an offering and sacrifice to God.
Well, amen.
Praise God for all more blessings flow. Praise Him, all creatures, hear me low. Praise Him above ye earthly hosts. Praise His Father, Son, and Holy Ghost.
The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Lift up your hearts.
We lift them to the Lord.
Let us give thanks to the Lord, our God.
It is right to give God thanks and praise.
Jesus came to bring light into the world, to teach people the truth of God's love for them and for all people, and the truth of living in God's presence. He walked in light, sharing His power and His spirit by healing, teaching, sharing meals, and feeding the crowds with the food that brings true life. He had compassion for the lonely, the sick, the brokenhearted, the poor, the naked, the imprisoned, and He asked His friends to care for them as much as they cared for themselves. Around the table, every life mattered, whether one was religious or pagan, man or woman, young or old, sinner or saint. Around the table, people met at the level of their most basic need, not just for food, but also for each other. And so we gather at this table. We remember the stories of bread broken and shared, of Jesus feeding the crowds, of unlikely guests revealing the face of God. It was on a night of both celebration and betrayal that He took the bread left over on the table, blessed it, broke it, and gave it to them, saying, "This is my body." Then He took the cup also left over on the table and shared it with them as His blood to be the life given to the life of the world. This is my blood. He stood in His truth, and He offered Himself as a witness to the power of love, showing us the way to live. Breathe upon us, Spirit of life, and upon this bread and this wine, that we may be born with Your Spirit's power. Unite us to Your Son, Jesus, with His Spirit, that we all may be one. Let us proclaim together, Christ has died.
Christ is risen.
Christ will come again and again. Christ speaks to us, saying, "I am the light shining upon all things. I am the sum of everything. For from Me everything has come forth, and towards Me everything unfolds. Split a piece of wood, and there I am. Pick up a stone, and you will find Me there. What was promised in pain has been delivered in glory. Lo, I will be with you until the end of time." And now, as our Savior Christ has taught us, we are bold to pray.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be Thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For Thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Therefore let us keep the feast, Alleluia.
The gifts of God for the people of God. Take them in remembrance that Christ died for you and feed on Him in your hearts by faith with Thanksgiving.
The body of Christ, the bread of heaven. The body of Christ, the blood of Christ, the cup of salvation. 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 The blood of Christ, the cup of salvation.
the cup of salvation. So two bread with a bun.
Before we say our post-communion prayer, I'd like to now invite the children and the youth to head out through those double doors. And you've got a special harvest festival all planned out for you. So children and youth, head on out. Let us say together the post-communion prayer. Eternal God, Heavenly Father, you have graciously accepted us as living members of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. And you have fed us with spiritual food in the sacrament of His body and blood. Send us now into the world in peace and grant us strength and courage to love and serve you with gladness and singleness of heart through Christ our Lord. Amen.
O Heavenly Father, in whom we live and move and have our being, we humbly pray that so to guide and govern us by the Holy Spirit, that in all the cares and occupations of life we may not forget Thee, but may remember that we are ever waiting in Thy sight, walking in Thy sight through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
I'd like to invite the congregation to be seated now for our town hall meeting. And we have the agenda for the meeting in the bulletin, at the last page. And we start with a call to order and then an update on ministries. I'm not going to give a thorough update, but I just want to say our ministries are thriving. We have-- this number is always fluid, but we have over 90 different ministries at St. Gregory's. And we're at the point-- and we're really close-- of actually having all 90 listed on the website with a two- or three-sentence description of them. We've never had that before, and we're close to it. So that's going to be available. But I just want to say, as I said in my sermon, I mean, we're just-- whatever part of our life you want to speak about, there's just ministry happening. And so I'm just grateful for all the ministries and our ministry leaders at St. Gregory's. I'm particularly grateful that during the time of pandemic followed by construction, we've just remained nimble, resilient, and adaptable to all the circumstances. And I think just the transition of worship here in this place has just been a sign of that. And I do want to say, I remember just before I went on sabbatical, I was here in Harris Hall for our first Sunday. And I said this to the whole congregation. I said, "Expect blessings from our time of worship in here." And haven't we found them? Yeah, it's really been beautiful. And so I'm grateful to God, grateful for our ministries. I'd like to invite now our treasurer, Gary Paris, to come forward, and he'll walk you through some of the numbers. We always think it's important at a town hall meeting. I'm just such a believer in ultimate transparency about finances, so that there's no secrets. There's no-- everybody understands that. It's really a high value for our congregation and for me. So we are-- we have a gifted treasurer in Gary. And so Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Father Andrew. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, as treasurer, usually I sometimes have good news, sometimes not-so-good news. I'm going to start with the good news today. And if you turn to the very last page, page eight, the capital campaign, I'm going to steal a little bit of Nancy's thunder. Okay? But if you look at the very bottom line there, you'll see that it says, "Expected excess funding." So we are looking somewhere between-- let's call it $75,000 to $80,000 of funding that we have raised, but we're not going to spend for the capital campaign. And you might ask, "Well, what are you going to do with that money?" Okay, well, that's up to the vestry. But my recommendation would be that we pay off some of our debt. Okay? So now with that, let me get to the maybe not-so-good news. Okay? And that's our full-year forecast. Now, if you look at the bottom, okay, it says, "Oh, you're going to lose $59." That's pretty good. Except that we had a budget that said that we were going to make almost $33,000. Okay? We get to that number, the $59 loss. Okay? Mainly because if you look up under revenues, endowment transfer, you'll see that an over-budget position of $38,000, which means we plan to take an additional $38,000 out of our endowment fund that we had not originally budgeted. Okay? Now, why were we in that position for this year? We had some highly unexpected expenses during the course of the year. I've spoken to them about them in my quarterly letters to the congregation and also at our annual meeting and our previous town halls. But we had some unexpected compensation expenses to the tune of a little over $52,000. Okay? Most of that relates to pension expenses that were unplanned for, that relate to prior years that we had to pay this year. Additionally, if we now look at next year's budget, okay, compensation will be-- we should not have any unexpected expenses there. So I'm very hopeful on that. But the Dyosin assessment, $123,000 this year, we know it's going to be $160,000 next year. Okay? So that's a very large increase through our stewardship campaign we have to cover. Insurance. I don't know exactly what our insurance increase is going to be, but as Bill mentioned, he said 18%. I think it's going to be closer to 15%, but it's still going to be a significant increase. And utilities. Utilities keep going up. We expect about a 5% increase in utilities from FPNL. So all of that said, okay, we are looking at a very tight budget for next year. And anything that you can do to go along and help us close that budget, particularly through stewardship, through your pledges, is greatly appreciated. And I'll be around to answer any questions that you may have. Did I keep it under a lot of time?
I was just settling in. Thank you, Gary. We'll have some time for questions and obviously conversation towards the end, but we are mindful of the time. I wanted to invite Nancy Stroud to come forward and just give a little update on the capital campaign. We're coming to really the end of our capital campaign, but we just want to make sure that everyone is updated about that. Nancy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Father Andrew gave me a minute, so I'm going to use a minute to thank you. Thank you, St. Gregory's. Thank you for raising generously more than $7.4 million. Thank you for doing this. Yay, thank God. Thank you for doing this during a scary time, during COVID, when we really didn't know what was going to happen, and still people came out generously with their gifts. Thank you for responding to multiple requests. It's not easy to come back and ask again for your support, but you came through. And we have beautifully been able to use what we've raised in a way that I think you're going to be astounded when we come back to the sanctuary at Christmas time. Thank you for giving fully. 173 families gave to the capital campaign, and that's really what we wanted to see. We wanted to see everybody, you know, who could give very generously and who could give according to their ability. And you came through. Thank you. And thank you for giving cheerfully. For a while, we really thought that, you know, we should offer the opportunity for people to have naming, you know, little cards and everything on the walls. People didn't really necessarily want that. We got a lot of beautiful gifts, and they said, "No, you know, we don't need any names anywhere." It was a very cheerful kind of giving. And thank you for trusting us to use your money well. And I think you will see that because of our great construction team led by Rob Mitchell, Gary Paris's great stewardship of our funds, you're going to be-- you're going to see that it's going to be better than you even expected. So thank you. And of course, yay, God. Thanks to God.
Thank you. And now, we've got Bill coming back to just give us an update on where we're at with our construction, which I know everyone is interested in hearing about.
So we're on the homestretch. We're almost done. To indicate that, we're going to be having this next week, October 25th, the first planning meeting and moving from here back over there. In addition, another sign that things are moving along well, the organ-- the pipes will be started to put in in the next few days. So that's a big one there. But anyway, what needs to be done? The center aisle is all in except for the border goes around it. That marble has been received and will be installed. New doors and trim are being done now this week. The lighting and sound systems are being finished up. The bathroom is being finished up. And we did a sort of a major upgrade to the choir loft per Tim's configuration and request. So a whole new floor plan, a whole new wood floor, new wood veneer up there, new railings. It's going to be-- it's going to be pretty special. So that's great for our choir and for Tim. Final cleaning will be the week of November 7th. New furniture will be the week of November 7th. The final punch list will start working on the week of November 14th. And we'll get over there as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So we wanted to do something a little different for this town hall meeting, that it tends to be very, "We present, you listen, and then we have some questions." But we thought we'd try to create a little energy and vision around some small group interaction. So what I'm going to invite you now to do is just kind of turn in twos and threes. I'd say four would be the most. But just kind of clump together just by turning to each other. And I want to take about five minutes to seven minutes. And here's what I'd like you to talk about. What are your dreams for St. Gregory's? As we now are about to enter into our eighth decade of ministry and witness from those first dozen or so families who gathered in faith and met at the, you know, the town hall here in Boca. And now here we are, 70 years later, a thriving congregation. What are your dreams for St. Gregory's? And I'd like to see if you could identify one or two dreams. What we'll do then is I'll just invite some sharing after that five minutes, and we can shout out. But we're also going to set up a process by which you can share that with me or Bill via email. And we really want to see what God is bubbling up for us as we now really start saying-- as we now really start saying, "What's next for St. Gregory's?" After all this. So take about five minutes, gather with two or three people around you. What are your dreams for St. Gregory's?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Two more minutes, two more minutes. All right, we're going to take a, great. That felt like good energy as we all were talking. Yeah, exactly. So that was, that was a new addition. So I also want to note for anyone watching online, we're inviting you to add any of your comments about what are your dreams for St. Gregory's and as well as questions. So we want to make sure the online folks have a chance to engage as well. Well, let's take now a few minutes. And, you know, we weren't in like group A, B, and C or anything like that. So it's just going to be a little bit of, let's hear from some people who feel like they're just inspired to want to share a little bit. Now, in terms of feedback, because we want to collect this data, would you please, would you please, would you please, send me an email or send Bill Lince an email with some of your ideas? And for those of you who want to process a little more, that's okay. Take the time and process. But, you know, I'm hoping to, at the next vestry meeting, we're just able to bring a, you know, a cornucopia of ideas and dreams. So Joe, you seemed like, yeah, Joe is pumped.
We're pumped.
Joe is my shill, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we were talking about, it would be really, for me, it would be really cool to have a space where the homeless people would be able to shower. And I know we have the portable showers, but it would be nice to have something set up where maybe the men can do Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the women can do, you know, Monday and Friday or whatever it is. But that was one thing. We were talking about the youth. I've always wanted to see some kind of, I think in the spring, like a spring camp that our church could host, where kids could come down, enjoy the beach experience. We'd need some kind of dorm space. Or even like when I was a kid, we had people that came and stayed at our house, you know, young people that came and stayed with us. So maybe have a spring break and they could go do that. And then we were talking about the scholarships, like enriching that for colleges and getting that, that fund to be bigger and helping our children feel connected to the ministry even in college, knowing that they're being reached even during college. And I know we do that a little bit, but we'd like to do it more.
Sure. Great idea. Spring break at St. Gregory's or something. Yeah, yeah. As you all, as you all know, we now have an active college ministry. We have four college students living in our Canterbury house. And one of our other college students, Elijah, was here. I see that he snuck out because he works, I know. But yeah, we actually have, so those are great ideas.
He's right there.
Yeah. There you are. So you're not at work yet. That's great. All right, great, great. Anyway, great. So yeah, shout out to you. Glad you're part of St. Gregory's. Wonderful. Let's hear some more. Maggie also seemed really ready to talk.
I'm taking notes.
Oh, yeah. Father Ben is the scrivener here.
I was saying to Anne Marie and Ed and Grace that when Bill and I joined the church, we were told, "We have column A, we have column B, we have column C, and there are like 20 or 30 different ministries in each column. Please pick at least one or two from each column." And I just thought, "This is great because you have a purpose." And to, I'm going to paraphrase from my son, who I heard at a stewardship plea in his own church. "People don't leave the church because they're asked too much of. They leave the church because they're not asked enough." So I think if the ministries have certain people that are in charge of them, and when people join the church, that they sign up for certain ministries, that they get called and reminded that they're part of this ministry. And this is what they can do.
Great. Thank you, Maggie. Anyone else want to share? Just raise your hand. And Alfredo back there, thank you.
Everybody knows I'm loud, so I'll try not to be too loud. One of the things that attracted me to St. Gregory's, besides Father Ben and pastor Andrew, was that we used to have these wonderful gatherings in this hall after every service, where everyone would contribute like potluck food. And it would be absolutely wonderful because we'd all have a chance to interact with each other. Like right now, things will end, everybody will leave, and we really haven't had a chance to interact all that much. With that situation, we'd have a food line, a dessert line, and you'd meet people as you were going through the lines. You'd meet people as you were sitting down at the tables. When the sanctuary is done, that is such a blessing that I think we all look forward to having again. Am I right about that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The second thing was, one of the things I loved about the church was the brothers group. And we haven't had a chance to do that, but a group of wonderful men, 20, 25, would get together as volunteers, work in that kitchen from early in the morning to prepare a wonderful breakfast for everybody in the church and the homeless. And then once a month, the brothers group would get together here in the evening as a meeting for something that we could do for our ministry to try to help St. Gregory's. And I look forward to that happening again because we can recruit more men to that. And that's all that I want to say.
Great. Thank you, Alfredo. Yeah, so just a comment on Alfredo's comments, and that is that so much of our ministries were on hold during the pandemic and now during construction. So when we get to January, there's going to be a real rebirthing of a lot of the patterns that have been life-giving for us. And Alfredo really highlighted two of them. So the very much, the intention is all those will come to life. Yes, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, go ahead. Yeah. Keep it going, Elijah.
So we were talking about like a sort of public transportation for people who can't make it to church. So we can just include more people in the community, and we can just have a church that just grows that much more. And we have like, you know, different skill sets that brought to the table for that reason, you know? So, yeah.
Great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Somebody else? Henrikus over here. Thank you, Henrikus.
We were, Ken and Nancy and I and Carl were talking about that now we have this beautiful facility coming online that we'd like to see to fill it. And if we look around Boca, we have all these new, you know, condos and apartment complexes and so forth. So there's a lot of growth, and I'd like to see that we grow the congregation. So I think we've been very stable in the number of people that are members of the church, people that have come to the church. But I'd like to see if we can make a jump and fill the pews that we're building in.
Amen. I looked at Father Ben because Father Ben and I also engaged in the conversation, and that was exactly our number one dream for St. Gregory's. So we were very much in sync with you on that one. And now we hear from the other side of the Brockman family. Bill, go ahead.
I'd like to support Joe's recommendation to expand our homeless ministry. And it, because I'm here on Thursdays with the ministry, very often people ask, "Can we use the bathroom?" And our answer is, "We don't have public facilities." And it would have been awkward. It's awkward to say no. And also the showers, that's another really important ministry. The other is, my interest is having more African-American music in the service. The cathedral in Washington really has wonderful, they've integrated both traditional and spiritual music into their services. So I would endorse that. And also the expansion of the college ministry. I don't, you know, it only requires money, of course, have a chaplain to reach out, because we do have three major colleges in the area.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Bill. Yay. Because I am totally time-conscious. We're at 11:22, and I promised 11:30, and we're going to honor that promise. But Vanessa, did you want to join in yet? And she's got her notes on her phone, it looks like. Very serious there, Vanessa.
Group effort. So developing the associate rector property into condos, knocking down that building and making it condos just like everything else around us, I think would maximize our investment of that real estate. And then, again, growing the congregation, increasing the awareness in the community of our church by things like expanding Ashes2Go or even hosting scouts or partnering with Rotary or partnering with other organizations or even, you know, Boca Lead. Boca Community Church does an amazing job with Boca Lead every month. I mean, we've got 400 people every single month having lunch together, networking, all faiths, all backgrounds. And it would be wonderful to maybe not even replicate that, but somehow partner or expand just awareness of our church.
Great. If only we knew someone at Rotary. Former president of Rotary. No, excellent ideas. Thank you for all, great feedback. Let's take maybe one more. Is someone just wanting to, someone? Yeah, okay. David Potter.
Probably don't need a mic.
Yeah, but we got to get you for the online folks.
All right, all right. Yeah, we're doing a lot to help with the needs of the people in our community, and it's a wonderful piece. One part that I was introduced to that a lot of times is missing is the justice aspect. And it was described to me this way, that the churches are really good at pulling people out of the drowning in the river. They're really good at that. But we need to send people upstream to find out how they're getting into the river in the first place. And so when we're looking at the poor and the homeless, what's going on to create that? Because otherwise, you just have an extreme. And it's not about either or, it's about both and. And I've been exposed to community, faith-based community organizing, where churches work together in terms of discrimination, affordable housing, that kind of thing. And it's another way to be outreach in the community and let people know that we care.
Excellent. Excellent feedback. Thank you, David. Yeah, David Cuminal asked me to remind people that if you don't have a parking decal yet, we have them available, right? So see David afterwards for a parking decal as well. I think we have time for one more question, and then we'll end it. Anyone else felt that they wanted to have a voice in this? And again, thank you, Ann. Again, please feed your emails to Father Ben or myself or Bill Lince as we kind of collect all of this. Go ahead, Ann.
Cecil and I were talking, both of us as lifelong Episcopalians. This is the first time in our lives, both of us, where the gospel and the lessons made sense to us when they're applied within the sermon. And we've been, we both have been in many parishes and have been raised in the Episcopal Church, but it never quite made sense to us before. And we want to commend both of you for what you do to pull it all together. And secondly, we would, we would support the comments about the future of the church. This is a very vibrant church, but a lot of Episcopal churches aren't. And the future of the Episcopal church is dependent upon bringing more young people in. As a mother of two 40-year-olds, one of whom goes to church and the other one says no, we need to pull more of those young people in and the ones that have kids so that the church keeps growing.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. You know, there St. Gregory's 20 years from now, you know, you see the smores and all that good, you know, all those folks are coming in here. So, but I couldn't agree more. We're so committed to our youth and children and our college ministries. You know, it does take money and giving and prayer. So, but we are working on it. You know, I thank you for your comments about, Father Ben and I. I just want to say that, you know, I feel like, you know, I get to do this. You know, I mean, that I... I mean, that, you know, I haven't said it in a while, but I'll say it again. I do it for free. You know, I mean, this is just what God has called me to do and what God has called Father Ben to do. And it's just a privilege to serve this community and try to be part of what God has got in store for all of us. So it's great. In the last two minutes, is there anything other than the, of course, the dreams about St. Gregory's, but on anything else that's happening at St. Gregory's? If you wanted to ask a question or raise a point, I'm happy to take or try to, try to respond to that. Yes, Zim.
Birthday blessing.
Pardon?
Before you add, I need my birthday blessing.
All right. So, you know, if you didn't hear that, Zim's wanting his birthday blessing. You know, I was sort of mindful today that, you know, okay, I was trying to keep it moving. I thought, well, we could get like a double blessing next week. But I really appreciate that people want to buy. Zim, who else is having a birthday?
I forgot the birthday, birthday blessing once while you were gone. And boy, did I hear from it. So, yeah, it's the thing.
So Joe and Melanie were eager and so Beatrice, oh, look at this. Oh, we got Brad, we got. All right. Lesson, lesson learned, never skip the birthday blessing. Or the anniversaries as well. Yay, this is great. Wonderful. Let us pray. Good and gracious Lord, we give you thanks for those moments at times in our lives where we are so mindful and so grateful for your biding care. Bless these your servants celebrating anniversaries and birthdays. Keep them rooted, grounded, growing, thriving in your life and love. And may God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit bless, preserve, and keep you. May our Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you and give you peace this day, this year, and always. Amen. Happy birthday, happy anniversary. Yeah, great group. Hey, we did it, 11:29. Yay. Folks, you're in the newcomers class. It won't be a long class today because you've been here for a while. But if I could meet the newcomers in the annex chapel area, I'll see you all there in a few minutes. And we're, we're ending with the closing. Yeah, you get a blessing and a hymn. All right, go ahead, Ben.
Sure. Please stand for the blessing. The wisdom of God, the love of God, and the grace of God strengthen you to be Christ's hands and heart in this world in the name of the Holy Trinity.
Amen.
Alleluia. Oh, you want to?
Alleluia, alleluia, alleluia. Let us go forth in the name of Christ.
Thanks be to God. Alleluia, alleluia, alleluia.